Morning. Today is February 8, 2022. This is a meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to... Well, actually, we have one item that we're pulling from Consent Agenda, item five. Other than that change, do I have a motion to accept today's agenda? Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headings.
Aye.
Basel, aye. Now's the time for public comment. Number one, this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you would like to make public comment, please step forward to the microphone or you can raise your hand on Zoom or use the star nine if you're on the phone. Being no one will close public comment number one, move on to agency reports. It looks like we have Stacy Sugar with Center for Creative Justice. Good morning, Stacy. Oh, still muted.
Hello.
Good morning.
Hi. Miss Stacy.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so, good morning. I'm Stacy Sugar, the Executive Director of the Center for Creative Justice. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you guys this morning. We appreciate Story County and the funding that is provided to the asset process. The mission of the Center for Creative Justice is to rehabilitate offenders, reduce victimization, increase public safety, and contribute to improving our community. So, we provide community supervision to offenders sentenced to adult probation by the courts. We use one-on-one meetings to address the needs of the client and we recognize that all people, including those that are just as involved, deserve to be treated with respect and dignity. We're unique from other probation agencies in the area in the sense that we offer support, guidance, and supervision to individuals who've been convicted of low-level offenses. So, these individuals can remain in the communities that they're a part of. They can remain active. We can guide them in being productive members of the community. In that process, we work with many local agencies with collaborations and partnerships to provide multiple services so that individual is learning skills and making better decisions so that they can meet their own basic emotional financial needs through these one-on-one assistance meetings and service referrals. So, if you refer to the report that I submitted, in the fiscal year 2020 to 2021, the Center for Creative Justice directly served 681 individuals. As the cases are assigned to us by the local courts, we don't have control over the number of cases that we receive at any given year. Obviously, the COVID-19 pandemic continues to impact the number of arrests. It had created delays in court hearings, which affected our overall number of clients served. At the end of the fiscal year, 342 clients had completed the terms of their probation with 288 clients achieving successful completion. So, while there are fewer case closeouts from the previous year, when you look at the percentage breakdown, the success rate remains steady at about 84% of clients successfully completing the terms of their probation. In addition, we complete an annual recidivism study. We take the successful case completions from the year and cross-check those in the following year with people that have been re-arrested. So, our most recent study for recidivism is from fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Again, the overall number shows the actual number of successful completions as lower because of fewer clients, but the reoffense rate, you know, reducing recidivism, we had a success rate of 92.8% of clients that successfully completed probation that did not re-offend in the following year. We're currently completing our fiscal year 2020 recidivism study. In addition to that study, we have also undertaken a new study to look back on the previous three years. So, that's an ongoing study right now and we will have those results in the next year. The staff at the Center for Creative Justice is passionate about serving our community. We continue to face challenges created by the COVID-19 pandemic. We're still in a time of pandemic management recovery and the availability of service offerings for clients continues to be impacted. There's a shift in trends that's affected the workforce that has also impacted resource availability. You know, as a staff, we're working tirelessly to try and find creative solutions to continue to assist our clients in finding solutions to make positive change in their lifestyles. However, despite these difficulties, our staff remains dedicated to creating positive change in our community. The need of community supervision of adult offenders has been well-established and supported by the court system and the Story County community and for that, we're grateful. In 2024, we're approaching our 50th year of providing adult probation services. Our agency is well-respected and utilized by our local judges and courts, providing for an alternate sentencing for offenders who would otherwise remain in the community unsupported and unsupervised. Our three full-time probation officers have specialized skills and training in the areas of mental health, domestic violence, anger management, substance abuse, co-occurring disorders, conflict resolution. And we, again, collaborate with local county and state agencies to provide valuable resources. We collaborate with agencies that offer basic needs, housing, education, medical care, mental health support, substance use treatment, parenting skills, employment skills, and other life skills. So, without that guidance and support that our clients receive from their probation officers, many of these resources would be underutilized with many clients unaware of the existence of some of these agencies within our community. We provide support to individuals who have limited to no positive support system. While we require compliance and supervision, compliance with supervision and conditions that are established and set forth by the courts to hold these individuals accountable, we provide this service in a safe, non-judgmental environment. From client surveys from fiscal year 2020, clients were asked to report if they have a better understanding of community resources than before they were on probation. Approximately 92% of clients surveyed acknowledged a better understanding of community resources. 91% attribute this knowledge of resources to their probation officer. In addition, 99% of our clients surveyed reported having made a positive change based on their participation in the program. As stated by a previous CCG client, I entered probation, a broken young adult with a drinking problem. I left a new man working toward a brighter future. So, we continue with the support of the community and we continue to appreciate the support of the community and our partnership with Story County, all of the asset funders, and this allows us to continue to empower individuals. We serve a high-need population and I couldn't be more passionate about the service that we provide to these individuals. We appreciate the support and financial generosity of Story County. I would now be happy to answer any questions.
Stacy?
Yes.
I don't have any questions for you, Stacy. I just want to say thank you for your report and I think it'll be really interesting when you look back over the next three years and see that the additional data that you take away and how your services are continuing to impact the clients you serve.
Yes, we're about halfway through that and I'm excited to keep seeing how we're impacting people in the future.
Stacy, this is Linda and thank you for your report. I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
You said that you normally do the one-year recidivism and I was making a note of that and then you said you were going to do a three-year report and I was glad to hear that.
Yes.
Well, probably you're going to see most of your recidivism in the first year following somebody getting lost supervision but still it's good to do that because I mean, most studies go multiple years and it's good. I saw that you're using a risk assessment tool. Is that one you developed internally or is that a research-based tool?
That's actually an evidence-based tool that is recognized by the state of Iowa and is also utilized by other agencies in the state.
Can you tell me the name of it?
It is the... We label it as the Assessment of Client Need, but we collaborated with the Department of Corrections to utilize that survey.
Is it a lengthy interview?
I'm sorry.
Is it a short one or is it a lengthy interview?
It is about 12 questions.
The Iowa Risk Assessment?
Yes.
I know that one. That's pretty good. During the pandemic, were you meeting virtually with clients? Did you get back to meeting face-to-face? How are you doing that?
So, initially, when all of the shutdowns occurred, the Center for Creative Justice did start to meet with clients virtually, working from home. So, we continued to follow the precautions and the recommendations that were established by the Department of Health. Around July of last year, so it would have been July of '21, we opened the office back up. We started meeting with clients, some of the lower-risk for health reasons, clients in person. While there were still some clients that presented some health concerns, we continued to meet with them virtually or via phone and at this time, we are fully meeting with people again, except in unusual circumstances.
Good. I know it was really difficult for you and also for the Department of Correctional Services to continue to provide supervision of clients during, you know, those are particularly early days of the pandemic, so.
Yes.
The face-to-face meetings because I think it's important. Do you still use volunteers to supervise clients?
So, we do not... We are not allowed by our insurance company any longer to have volunteers working directly with clients. We do have a student intern right now and so our student intern is actually one of the ones assisting with the recidivism study and some additional filing. But, per the insurance requirements, they did not want anybody face-to-face or directly working with clients any longer.
That's very bizarre. And CCG started out as a volunteer, volunteers providing services and here's the insurance no longer. Yeah, that's interesting.
Yes, and that's information. Being a new director, only having been here since October, that's something that I just learned recently. So, that's something that I do want to ask more questions into because I know the use of volunteers is, you know, valuable to our agency and, you know, we appreciate anyone who has an interest in, you know, helping people. You know, so right now, at this time, I have allowed for volunteers to be utilized still in other capacities. This isn't directly a volunteer program, but we are working with Iowa State University through both their protege program and their MBA business students are also coming in and assisting us with some research at this time because I think those partnerships are, you know, so important and helping students, you know, prepare for their future careers, I think, is a very worthwhile endeavor as well. So, we've still supported that as well as our Board of Directors. You know, our Board of Directors is a volunteer board and so I'm still trying to incorporate volunteerism through other aspects while I do some more research.
I don't know if this would help or not, but I know that access at least used to be primarily services provided by volunteers. I don't know if they're still doing that much. You know, maybe they have some help that they can give you on this issue.
Yes, I have a lot of questions that I want to continue to follow up on.
Excellent. I want to thank you for all you're doing and I want to congratulate you on a 50-year anniversary of CCG. I was around when CCG started and worked with the original director really closely and throughout the years. So, it's amazing, the 50 years that you served the community. I hope that's my celebration of that that we can...
Yes, we're very excited for that.
A lot of questions, I guess. Couple more, but nothing more, just good comments. You know, some of the things I've seen in your report, you're looking at evidence, you're looking at like protective factors and those kind of issues. You're just doing all the right stuff, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't have much, Stacy, but so having served on the board for the past seven years, it's been great to see all the good work that happens at CCG. The supportive environment that you create around your clients has always made me feel good about being involved with the agency. In our regular board meetings, you often report on the types of crimes that are being assigned to the agency level of offensive. I think that would be helpful to have in the report just so that, so we can see, you know, who you're serving, what types of offenders you're working with. I think that would be helpful to incorporate in this report too. And then I think at our last board meeting, we talked about how you were starting to also look into some demographic information to report on that. I look forward to hearing more about what you dig up doing that too.
I appreciate that feedback because these are all things that, you know, as I continue to, you know, take on my role as Executive Director and look at the existing data that we are compiling and the other things that I want to do from here. I'll take any suggestions for next year because, you know, being the first year in a new position or the first report in a new position, you know, it's exciting to hear that, number one, you know, this is the type of input and data you guys are looking for, but also what other recommendations you have as I move forward.
Well, and you really, you hit the ground running when you stepped in as Executive Director. It's much appreciated. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you.
Moving on to consideration of minutes, we do not have the minutes from February 1st yet. So, consideration of personnel actions. Personnel actions as presented. Moved and seconded. Heads.
Aye.
Merkin.
I'm Basel.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the aforementioned motion.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Heads.
Aye.
Basel, aye. Moving on to public hearing items. We have second consideration of ordinance number 302, amending Chapter 80 Flood-Plane Management Program with Story County Court of Ordinances. Good morning, Amelia.
I don't have anything really to report on this other than we made an amendment at the last hearing and so that was placed on the auditor's counter, rerouted to county departments. We didn't receive any comments from them or from, you know, the public. So, we would recommend approval on second consideration and waiving third consideration.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, what was the amendment?
Yes, the amendment was adding it prior...
Is that the paragraph that says only trenchless?
Yes. Yep, so before it said only trenchless construction methods shall be permitted and we clarified that there should also be a buffer around the stream where they're also required. So, it's not just under the stream, but, you know, within 50 feet.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I will open public hearing. If there's anyone from the public who would like to make comments, you can step forward to the microphone or raise your hand on Zoom. Will you star nine? No one step forward? I will close public hearing.
I approve all of ordinance 302, amending Chapter 80 Flood-Plane Management Program of the Story County Court of Ordinances on second consideration and waives their consideration.
Moved and seconded. Heads.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basel.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to additional items. We have consideration of Resolution 22-59 Appropriation Amendment. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning. How are you all?
Good. How are you?
Yep. So, you appropriate dollars at the beginning of the fiscal year and during the fiscal year for different departments. My job is to watch and make sure nobody's going to go over in their department and then we have to either amend the budget or amend the appropriations. In this case, I'm going to amend appropriations at this point in time. The juvenile court budget, while has the... The... What do you want to call it here? The only thing we pay out of their budget is the juvenile court care. It's been around $40,000, $45,000 a year for the last couple of years. The budget $100,000. This year, it has gone skyrocketing and they're at 83% of their budget. I did reach out to Jerome because I wanted to be able to verify with him that this was going to work out for him along with the fact that I wanted to give you some sort of an explanation. Increase is based on a daily CIJDC rate, charges for each youth. They incorporated exigent rates youth that require further supervision or aid. And Story County has one client that has a daily rate of $365 on the top tier of that exigent rate. So, that's the explanation for why it's so high this year. I'm hoping we can make it until an amendment, a budget amendment at this point in time with the amount of dollars we're putting in there. So, that's where we're at. So, the code allows us to... As long as it's in the same service area, the code allows to move dollars for departmental appropriations. So, that's what I'm doing in this case. I'm increasing juvenile court by 40 and decreasing county-based services by 40,000.
So, the increase is because of one person or because of one person and they've expanded the services they provide?
He says we're also experiencing clients staying in detention longer due to lack of available placement facilities. Licensed facilities are experiencing insane employment difficulties trending with pandemic. So, that's what he's telling... That's what he's saying. So, I'm worried about the dollars. He's worried about the rest of them.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's too bad to hear that kids are staying in detention because they can't get into...
Right.
Yeah, right. That's great. That's alarming.
Incredibly alarming.
Yeah, because it's not towards change. Change happens, but it doesn't happen for the better. So, something to think about, but...
Thank you for keeping an eye on that for us.
Certainly.
Anything for you to do at the end of the year.
For initially to get us through till I can amend the budget in May.
Ready for motion?
I am indeed. Okay. I would move Resolution Number 2229, transfer $40,000 from county-based services to juvenile court services. 2259.
2259. You said 99.
Yeah, I missed one. You said 2229.
2259.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Wonderful. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
It was the man's time. Basel.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ford.
Thank you.
Can I get some of your comments, please?
Okay, moving on. We have discussion and consideration of contract for greenhouse gas emissions inventory for Story County Iowa governmental operations with the University of Northern Iowa Center for Energy and Environmental Education.
Yeah.
That's mouthful. Good morning. This was discussed in December and then again vaguely with the high level, with the resolution adopting the climate leadership strategy a couple of weeks ago. So, this is actually the contract to bring the, you and I, University of Northern Iowa Center for Energy and Environmental Education in to do our greenhouse gas inventory just for governmental operations. Again, this was not budgeted, so it takes formal action by the board supervisors. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
My question is, oh, look, it's the time of completion, it would be the end of July. So, we're looking at... And is this going to be that kind of guide for us for our next steps?
Right. Right. Based on this, staff will develop a request for proposals. This will be a part of the piece that will help staff and then go green team develop a request for proposals, then to bring someone in to do the entire Climate Resilience Action Plan. That would be through this fall and then we'd start that planning endeavor probably the first of 2023, ideally. This will help you set some targets.
Thank you. It's not budgeted. Where will this come from? Do we need to include that in the motion?
Oh, because Lisa left.
It is in the... Well, I mean, it's in the... On the agenda. But it's... But it's, I think we would need to include it in the motion.
I would... I'll have to check with Lisa. I do. I don't know.
Let's just...
Like, I'm trying to get you in here somehow.
I think there's... County-wide services at this point in time to go ahead, go forward with this if that's what you want to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. I want to thank you for the several different meetings and discussions that you had with the folks at University of Northern Iowa for running and grabbing the contract. And I know it's going to take some time from different departments and staff to gather all the information that they need and that they need quickly so they can get this done on time. So, I'm just saying thank you for what you've done and thank you in advance for everybody who's going to be working on this moving forward and for getting the Go Keep Green Team going again and everything. This is... I think each step is something to celebrate.
Okay, I agree.
Thank you for your work on that. And ready for motion.
Okay, I approve a contract for greenhouse gas emissions inventory for Story County Iowa government operations with University of Northern Iowa Center for Energy and Environmental Education for $5,000, which is unbudgeted to county-wide.
Moved and seconded. Heads.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basel.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration of Planning and Development Work Program item to develop public outreach toolkit.
Thanks. Hello again. Hello again. So, this is a work program item from last year. It's a public outreach toolkit mainly focused on when we have a development case, so a conditional use permit or a subdivision. You know, what kind of outreach can we do? I think this actually originated from our C2C plan. So, I'm glad we're finally getting it done. So, I wanted to focus mainly today on... So I wanted to focus mainly today on, you know, here's the toolkit, I'll take any comments, but also how we're going to start to implement this. First, our intern, our former intern Emily Rizbit did a lot, most of the work on this. So I just wanted to thank her and she met and I met with Bryce and Leanne on different sections. So I really appreciated all their work as well. So if we could go to the next page. You know, a lot of this is informed by, you know, we're doing notices to inform folks, but also how do we get to actually, you know, participate and inform us, you know, inform the process beyond just notifications have an effect on the outcome. So that's what this spectrum of public participation is about. So the first one though is notifications. You know, we are going to be reassessing on page six, some of the distances we notify. Specifically for loud uses, uses that may have odors, a lot of these are conditional uses. But another thing we're going to be doing is, you know, for other cases such as larger subdivisions. I think we're going to build in a part of our code that just says at the discretion of the director, we can increase the notification distance. We are notifying a lot more, a lot greater distance than most other counties already. But for things such as, you know, the Y S S conditional use permit or, you know, a larger subdivision, it'd be great if we could say, you know, we're going to we're going to notify a half mile or even a mile to capture, you know, folks that might be impacted. So that will actually take place as part of amendments to chapter 87, 92, and 90 that are on our work program.
I would like to have a minute of refreshment direction because there may be some things that are on the county, but when you look at transportation type of patterns may really impact on a smaller incorporated area. And it may might make sense to at least notify, you know, the city government
Sure.
in that case.
Sure.
To get their to get their sense of, you know, what what's this use going to do.
Yeah.
I I really like to being proactive about them and you can't cover all that.
No. Yeah, and and we're going to try with some that are obviously, you know, I think private aircraft landing fields and gun clubs, those obviously have noise impacts that go beyond a quarter mile. Right, so I think some of these we can build it, but yeah, I appreciate that comment. Thanks. So another thing we're going to be doing with the next notice we send is moving to postcards. And this is because I think they're going to catch people's eyes better. The letters are a little bit dense that we send, people don't open the envelopes, I found. We're going to put a QR code on our note on our postcards, but we're also, if you could go to the next page, please. Oh. Yeah, I think that's it. No, I'm sorry. Um. I thought it was in here, but the backside is really going to clearly say, you know, for folks that don't have a smartphone or don't want to use the internet. It's still going to have our contact info in big bold letters, you know, this is how you make a comment. So I don't want to think that we're just shifting to online only. And then we're going to still have, you know, a good description of what the use is in a map. Just a little bit designed to be a little bit more user friendly.
I think, yeah, the contact us as phone number.
Yeah. Yeah. Um. And then we'd also like to use social media a little bit more, so you know, when we're posting an agenda for board of adjustment or planning and zoning, maybe have our our intern Emily set up some templates to use that people could slide through just to see what the cases were versus having to go to the agenda. And also just continue to monitor opportunities, for instance, like our work program meeting to maybe make a little bit more detailed post. And one thing I want to make sure we're doing though is monitoring how much we're posting on the story county page. And you know, if county conservation has their own page, for instance, I want to make sure we're not, you know, taking over the story county page if we really get into this. So short term, we're definitely going to be looking at planning and zoning commission board of adjustment, you know, sending Bryce and Leanne some pre-designed pictures to use. Okay. And then signs, so we currently use signs on properties that say development proposed rezoning proposed for rezoneings. And we are going to just expand that. I currently have signs that say development proposed, but as you can see, you know, a lot of signs that other communities use are more specific. For instance, they use like a specific color or a letter to indicate what type of case it is. I do have money in the budget for some more signs, so we might do a little bit of experimenting with this. And yeah, I think it's important because, you know, we can send notice within quarter mile. But if it's on somebody's route every day when they're driving to work, this signboard will really capture it. And another thing we're thinking about doing is, you know, how when realtors have a for sale sign, they have a little box on the side of the sign, we could put some flyers with more information in a little box. So I do have money budgeted for that, for this fiscal year. And then this is something I'd like to implement spring of this year with the website refresh. I think there's a really good opportunity for us to make our website more interactive and a lot of communities have maps of all development cases where folks can click on a parcel, see what's going on, get linked to the agenda. Yeah, and it's something that, you know, our staff is really capable of doing. I just want to make sure it it works with the website refresh to be super user friendly. So I've got a meeting set up with the website folks through Barb and I've provided them with this page of what I'd like to do. So we're looking forward to that. And then another thing that Stephanie's been working on and I think will roll out this year are are videos on how to submit a permit application, like tracking on your screen, you know, this is what you click to submit payment. Or even, you know, this is the process of a conditional use permit. I could talk through folks and what to expect. And just having a section on our website with some how to videos. And then this is even longer term, but you know, this might be a good intern project for this summer on how to write an effective public comment. So making sure folks know what sections of the code staff is looking at, what process the board is going through. Maybe having a glossary of common terms, because when I say C U P conditional use permit, I mean, what does that even mean? Next, please. And then finally, we've been doing this a little bit already, but building into the code that we may require an informational meeting for neighbors for certain types of projects. So we did this with Y S S. We've done this with Fernalds as well with a different work program item. And it's a it's a pretty good idea just because we're getting, you know, clear factual information out beforehand and providing folks with an opportunity to provide comment or letting them know what that opportunity will be. So that'll be a code amendment that's already on our work program to build in. Any questions?
I was wondering what panel faces.
Oh, yeah, it is. I guess it's it's good for visualization for folks that might have like eyesight issues where you take out like the punctuation and some of the spaces. And so just paying attention to, I think that's really about when we're doing our website design, making making sure that there's an accessibility piece built in so folks can view it in a more accessible format. Yeah.
It's on page 10.
Yeah.
Under the social media section, I believe. I could use consideration.
Yeah, our yeah, our intern Emily looked into, you know, when we're designing our website, what we need to do to make sure that that folks with visual impairment.
Some of it's the simplest contrast.
Yeah, exactly.
Honestly, looking at your your bar point right now.
Yeah.
And it's the contrast is not real good.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's it's.
I know, yeah. Part of this is my fault because I found out I don't know how to print a booklet. So when I posted this on your agenda, it became small than it's supposed to be.
I've got it tuned way up and I'm walking back and forth.
Okay.
That's why this.
Yeah, but okay.
No, that's that's okay. But no, I've just known that lots of things that what used to be sharp black text is getting into some kind of gray text.
Yeah.
Really is hard for people who don't have good vision.
And Emily did make a postcard template, for instance, that's just black and white.
Yeah.
So that that's probably the one we're going to use, especially in terms of cost, not just
right.
So it it is pretty sharp, we did talk to Leanne and Bryce about that and Emily did some research on making sure at this sharp. Thank you.
Yeah. If anything we can do to break people in and provide them more opportunity to use.
Yeah, I really like this. Especially the times you get a call and I didn't know that was happening.
Yeah.
And as much as we try to get things in newspapers, you know, we got a media, regular media is not what it used to be. And and you're finding some prospective ways to do this and really get out to people who want to know about it. So I'm I'm knowing, but.
Great. Yeah. I'm excited to start trying some stuff.
Your intern did a very good job.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure you had something to do with it too.
Moving on to discussion and consideration of classification and compensation quotes.
Good morning.
Either side of some.
Either side, one or the other. All right, so we are getting ready to move forward with our classification and compensation study here at the county for all of our non-bargaining. I did reach out to four different companies, I heard back from three. I did not hear back from the company that did our two last studies. Springstead, they are now Baker Tilly, I don't know if they've had change, just never heard back from them, so. Which isn't a isn't necessarily a negative, it is nice to have somebody new come in and kind of take a look at things, see how things are put together. Looking at some of the there are three different different consulting groups, they all have different approaches, which is pretty typical. I did a comparison and just kind of outlined the main things that I look at when I'm looking at a consulting firm to come in and do this, I have been through two of these. One thing I will say, the the cost range from 27.5 to 45.5, so there is there is a quite of a difference between those three consulting firms. Carlson Detman was the one that came in with 27.5, it does take them a little bit longer, about a month and a half longer to complete the study. They don't include a lot of follow up. The other two, Condray and Associates and Logic Compensation Group, they do, they come in and do the study and then each of them does have some follow up. I will say Logic, compensation group, which is in that paper, she's very familiar to a lot of the H R group in Iowa. I like their approach for the follow up. I know they're the most expensive firm here, but they have a they have a process where they come in. They don't just give you the study, give you the plan and say, okay, here you go, hope it works. They're very, you know, very structured. They have meetings at three months, six months, nine months, 12 months, they want to make sure whatever they assisted with the county and implementing is working, if not, they'll make some changes, so.
How do they determine whether or not it's working? What's criteria for work, what's criteria for working?
Complaints from us. Issues we have internally, yeah.
It's either we can't recruit
Yep.
for this or.
Or having some internal equity issues or different things like that, it's not, you know. We had to make some changes, it's not working. Feedback from departments, offices, employees. You know, that interaction. Another nice thing. When we had Springs to come in, they don't typically, you don't see a consulting firm that sends out a survey with all of your that benchmarks every position in. So we have 63 different classifications that will be included in this study. About 120 employees in most 63 classifications. Logic Compensation Group will do a survey with all 63. That doesn't mean they'll get data on all 63 because we might have some positions that no other comparable organization to us has. We have some unique ones. The other two will probably do about 40, they usually benchmark about 40 positions. So I do like that their their survey includes 100% of the positions. When we did the Springs dead one, they did about 40 also, they didn't do them all. And and we had 103 at that time, so that would have been fairly daunting.
I'm confused.
Okay.
You said something in comparison yesterday. Congress and under interviews, Congress and Associates would interview 75% of 120 employees.
Employees, that's not the survey, the survey is down below, positions benchmarked survey.
So probably 40.
The survey is what goes out to Lake County, Dallas County, whatever whatever we feel. You know, they develop for us, they recommend who who our comps are, that survey that they develop will go out and then they will give us they give the consultant all that data back, you know.
Survey is they will
do all six.
Do this information gathering for each
All positions is what
classification that we have.
Yeah, but the the other two, Condray and Associates said about 40, they feel that's a sufficient amount to benchmark. And Carlson Detman didn't determine, they just said it's a percentage, I did reach out to, they most recently did the city of Mason City. And they did about 50% of their positions, so they have 80 positions, they did 40, which is pretty typical. That's what I typically see, I don't see 100% of your positions. Logic felt like 63 isn't too many, you get too many, people don't want to respond. It's it's time consuming, it's daunting.
How many classifications?
60, 63 non-bargaining.
Okay, so all 63 are non-bargaining.
63 would be included in that survey. Again, she might not get data for all 63, but it's a good.
So then for the others that don't do all 63, do they do the 40 and then say, well, it looks like you're typically above or typically below and then just use that to inform the rest of the.
Then they map it on internal, so like the 23 that they don't, they score out internally and then they use all that market data to do our comp schedule and then they place them.
And then your previous one, you did compensate before, did they do?
They did 40.
They did 40, so they didn't do.
They didn't do all of them. Yep.
So what is the interview?
Those would be with employees to get a good idea of their positions. The other two don't necessarily necessarily do the one-on-one interviews unless they have questions, they'll do a job audit, what they call an audit. So they'll contact if they don't understand what the position is. And they use more or less the P A Qs.
I've shown we use. We've got logic compensation group only interviewing H R and board supervisors.
The logic compensation group starts with H R board and then they'll pull it like department heads and different things like that. And then Carlson Detman, it's more your management and then they'll they'll get the management to sign off on the P A Qs, which is the same thing. Logic, we do a lot of work on our job descriptions ourselves. Which are which is what we're planning on doing. Condray and Associates does a lot of interviews with employees, they're rewriting all the job descriptions, putting everything in. That's included in their proposal.
So Condray rewrite the job descriptions with the constant shirt, but.
The other ones will use our job descriptions or a questionnaire that will go out. We have to verify their.
What used to be known as desk audits.
Job audits?
Yeah.
That's what they would do if they have questions.
Yeah, questions, but they wouldn't, but they would simply be.
But they're not going to do a desk audit for all 63 classifications. Unless they unless we need to update those, if that makes sense.
When would our job classifications last?
I have sent everything out and I'm working on getting them all up to date, I sent that all out at the beginning of fiscal year in preparation for this.
Sent out to all employees?
Yeah, all the departments and offices submitted the P A Qs to update the descriptions. Yeah, all the departments and offices submitted the PAQs to update the descriptions.
So you've done that, so there's no reason to.
I've done the PAQs. They're not, I don't have the descriptions all updated and sent back to the departments. That's the next, that's what I'm working on.
What are PAQs again?
Physician analysis questionnaire. Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay.
I also use some terminology.
It's PAQs.
Oh, position description questionnaires. You know, they ask for the education requirements, the job duties, the experience, you know, anything that's unique to each position.
That's actually the person in the position.
That filled it out.
So looking at like Padre, for example, that says that they will include updating job descriptions when you're looking to have that.
I pretty much have that already started, so it would be less work for them. I mean, if we give them pretty much everything that's all.
Look at, I mean, we're kind of looking at all three, but my question is, would you say, can we've already updated all of these? You know, have our different departments together? Would they still go interview?
They might still interview to get a good indication of what the position does. So when they do the survey and stuff. I mean, they, they've worked with Dallas County, so they under, they've done a county in Iowa. Logic Compensation Group has worked with Lain County for probably 12 years now, and then they've worked with a couple cities, and then Carlson Detman. Their main consultant was an HR director for a county in Wisconsin, so doesn't have Iowa HR experience, but has worked with, you know, different places, knows government, different things like that. I like the fact that the two of them have done county work. I think counties are different than cities, even though we do similar job functions. We're set up differently. We have different structures. We have, you know, the elected officials. So I, I do think that's a little, that's important to take into consideration. So I think logic compensation is a little more thorough in their analysis of different things. They have a few different approaches as far as their job evaluation system. They clearly said that they'll look and work with the county to see what fits our needs best. They have three different methods. Condery and Associates has their one and so does Carlson Detman that they use, which Springstead had theirs too, which worked well over the years.
So, um, so you're saying logic would start with HR and board supervisors, but still then pulling department heads and elected officials?
Work with different people and we can have individual meetings.
But that wasn't the, I didn't see that.
Their main, their main, their main piece is their structure. It's the board structure, so they start with the board, get their philosophy on. Hey, different things like that and look down from there. Where Condery and Associates typically starts with all the employees and then kind of works the other. They still have to have some conversations with the board. It's the board's comp.
Right, right. Yeah, the comparison.
I know. It, it was hard. Some of the stuff was hard to compare.
Yeah, but Condery would still talk to department heads and elected officials.
They'll talk to everybody. I think all consultants will. They, Springstead did last time too. We did study meetings, different things like that. Get perspective.
I, I think the, I think the thing that's sticky for me is I, I like the idea that the consultant will actually talk to the employees about what they're doing. I think that's really important.
Yeah, I like that too.
And I think it.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question about desk audits.
They, they all do job, I call job, job audits. They might not interview every single employee in the classification, but they do that. Springstead did that too. A lot of them do it more or less based on information request, that physician analysis questionnaire. That's the employee's opportunity to say, yep, this is what I do. And then that's signed off by the supervisor too, because we do sometimes get in a situation where they're not the same, not very often. But where we do have, you know, the supervisor and the employee don't agree on the same job duties that they do, so.
Padre says their follow-up is one year.
Yep.
I know that logic breaks it down.
Yeah.
Is that something that.
They could probably do it more scheduled.
Get more scheduled versus just that open end of one year.
Yep. They will take care of all of the appeals too. Where logic would do it too. They just didn't specify the number. Carlson Detman will do five and then they charge per appeal. And the first time we did, I think I had, I had one appeal. When, when we did our first study with, and Springstead handled that appeal. Just send all the information and they relook at some factors, different things like that. I do know people that have worked with all three companies. All three companies are reputable. I think they would serve the county well. I actually talked to a HR director that is, she used both Condery and Associates and now is working with Carlson. Because she is an HR director, worked with Condery and Associates at a county and did a study back in like 2015. Moved to a city and is now is working with Carlson, because that's who came in and did their plan a few years before she started there. So she's worked, you know. I had a good conversation with her. She said they're both, they're both good. She's worked well. They have different approaches. So I think any of them will be fine. Condery is a set, like they'll use their evaluation system and use our, you know, update all the job descriptions and then put everybody on that scale. Same with Carlson Detman. They'll use their methodology and then logic, they have a few different ways of doing things. So they'll kind of see what works for the county.
So, so logic is a little more.
It's more tailored, I think, from what I've seen.
This is a logic comp utilizes four options for the organization's consideration. We will describe these options during the study initiation meeting. You have some familiarity with it, so, and you're comfortable with it.
I have some familiarity with what they've done with Lain County.
Okay. And, and.
And, and the other piece that I can do is I could bring the two consultants and then have them give a five-minute presentation to the board. Would want, or three consultants, I guess there's three of them, if you would want to individually meet that in person. But I'm sure they would be willing to explain their process, their approach.
They're talking in about reviewing internal equity between jobs and they don't talk about talking to employees. That's where I just kind of wonder, right? I think, would they have to?
They would have to get the information and, and whether they have a one-on-one conversation or they do it through that form that the employees fill out.
I mean, could we?
We can tell.
Add that in there, so, and say, this is, this is important to, to us in, in this, in this information gathering process. We'd like to see.
Interviews.
And, and maybe it's, to me, I think that it's really important that employees have faith in the job that was done. And that's one of the reasons I think, you know, whether or not they find out anything, they would have found out other, would have found out otherwise. I think that employees see that there's a study being done, that, you know, several were consulted, they were talked to about it. Think, you know, the consultant didn't just take a bunch of paper or a bunch of files in the HR office and put it into their predetermined, slot it into their predetermined model, and here's the study and everybody liked it. I, I think the touch, you know, in terms of actually knowing there's a study going on, having been asked about their job. It doesn't have to be everybody, but enough that there's somebody in every department.
75% is fairly high. I mean, when I saw that, that's, that's a good, you know, absolutely.
That, that was.
And I've heard, like I said, I've talked to the former HR director that, that worked with Condery Associates and she had nothing but good things to say about them. Actually, every reference I called, it had great things to say about every consultant. So, I mean, I think it. I don't think we can go wrong. I, obviously there is some cost difference, which is to take into consideration and then some lengths. One thing I did ask, you know, the five and a half months on Carlson Detman, they, they do have a little bit more time built in to get that done. That won't get that done this fiscal year. When I talked to a reference for Condery and Associates, they said in their experience, they have always been kept their deadlines. Got the, the deliverables done, given that. They are not local. They're from Georgia. That's where that firm is. But we have. Condery is out of Georgia.
Logic is Iowa.
The, the main consultant is out of Iowa. She's in Marion. They used to work for Fox Lawson and then Fox Lawson was, I don't know, bought out or incorporated with Gallagher. So a lot of the logic compensation group is Gala, former Gallagher consultants. Gallagher is one of the larger benefits compensation consulting firms nationwide, so. And then Carlson Det, Detman is a Cunningham, what is, what is it called? Cunningham and Butler company. They get lots of phone calls from somebody, sales calls from Cunningham and Butler, but. So they're all, like I said, it, it's really hard. If I could take what I like from each quote and how they do that and have it worked into one, that, that would be my. That would be best, but I do like the interviews again with employees. Like I said, they feel valued. They get their input. I do like that approach. Updating the job descriptions does, I mean, we're working on it, so a lot of that is done, but it's getting another set of eyes on there. Where the other two look at it, but we would have to finish the product as far as getting the data into the job description and everything. I like the appeals process with both Carlson Detman and Condery and Associates. I think that's important to give employees the opportunity to, you know, if they don't feel like maybe all the information that they shared in the interview was received in the appropriate, you know.
Right.
Maybe it was confusing. They still have that opportunity to feel that. Not when just the employees either. I mean, that could be department heads that don't feel like, or elected officials that don't feel like the structure within their department was quite right, so they have that opportunity too. They, they all, you know, logic did not give a number as far as how many organizations in the survey, but the other two, up to 20, that's sufficient. Usually we see about 10 to 12 respond. And there's a lot of, I don't beg, but I ask very. Please complete, I mean, we want, we want adequate data. We want good comps. We want to make sure everybody is included in the surveys that we can possibly get, so. I fill out a lot of salary surveys for other organizations in hopes that when we, when we do it, that they reciprocate and do that for us also, so. I would be 100% comfortable with, with any of them. I do, like I said, I do like the follow-up with logic. With Condery and Associates, they do have a one-year follow-up. I could probably get some more structured. Follow-ups with them, work with Steve on that. Carlson Detman, I did talk to the HR director at the city of Mason City and they haven't had any issues. They've had to go back. They have them, they moving forward, they have them doing all of the job evaluations. So they contract with the company to do it instead of doing it in-house. Most of them, like Dallas County does it in-house. And then they're always there to reach out if, you know, something doesn't quite look right or. Questions. We did that with Springstead too, so. I do, in the budget, there's 40,000 is what the budgeted target was. There is enough in the budget to cover any of the three of these. I did that calculation, so. I'm happy to reach out and see if, if they each want to, you know, I don't want to push this off another week. I'd like to get it going, but, but I can sure see if any of the three would like, if the board would feel more comfortable meeting the consultant. Just to get a feel, I mean. They talk very, when you, when you talk to them, it's very high-level compensation strategies. It's, you know, I try to ask them to.
I was reading their document yesterday, so.
And there was some proprietary information and that, that's why I didn't, I mean, their evaluation systems are proprietary to each consulting firm, so. That's why I wanted to do just a more of a comparison.
Well, I agree. I do like the, I do love the, the interviewing of employees. Have what you said, have the process. It's good to have. What you're looking at, you know, benchmarks, 30 or 40 or 10%. History has shown we've done 40 in the past. That's not out of the norm. I guess we need to, to let me say, okay, that seems like a concern, I'm not doing 100%.
The other piece of that, when somebody's filling out a survey, they like 40 versus 63. I mean, it's, it's a lot of work to complete the salary survey, so. But, but yeah, we're. I guess I put 65, I meant 63. All right. That's a, that's a figure. You know, I got 63, but. I think all of them would, would understand the positions and know, I don't think there's a question. You know, you get a, you get a consulting firm that's never done work in Iowa or with counties or cities. Government's unique, very different than the, the studies that they do if it's a private sector or business. So, I mean, I think they all have that. Again, I did my due diligence and checking. I like to check back with consistency and I trust the individuals that, I mean, I know the HR directors for these other organizations, so. I think they would be pretty, pretty honest if they had any concerns with any of the consultants, so. I know Dallas County has done two with Condery and Associates. They brought them back the second time, so.
It looks like Condery, I'm looking through who they work for, just like this, I don't know, cities.
The, the only county, Dallas County was the only, but the same with.
Logic.
Logic, it's, it's Lain County. And then Carlson Detman, there were no county, and I just picked Iowa. I mean, I know counties in Ohio and Wisconsin, they're, they're similar. But, but I do think having some experience with Iowa counties is a plus, so.
Sure.
Maybe if, um, Condery did two from Kansas and Georgia.
I had never heard of Condery and Associates until Dallas County used them back in 2015 or 2017, I can't remember.
I said they're using them like.
Yeah, they already did. They up, they just updated. They had a whole new.
I was gonna say, I thought they could just.
Yep, 2020 or 2021. They just implemented that.
Yeah.
That new structure, so.
Yeah, they're a couple families. I like the idea of an Iowa. That really matters that much. I was looking at. It, it's interesting. It's like logic has the highest, but it looks like Condery is offering more. I know you've got three. I'm not as impressed by the three, six.
Oh, the follow-up.
Not follow-ups as much.
And I guess that's just from experience when we implemented it last time. There were some, there were some things and I did, I mean, Springstead was good about, you know, follow-ups. Wasn't included and probably not as much of an interactive process as what some of these are. But again, they're, they're never, you know, most of them will work with you because they want, I mean, they want repeat business, so they want to make sure what the product that they gave you is, is working, is working for you, so.
I got a question too. Logic does not have, if they try to determine on the appeal process, so the question is.
We might have to handle that.
Would there be additional costs related to that where it is included under Padre? And then Carlson Detman.
That one does have.
Of the five included.
Condery's got some room, because I went 32,000. What I'm thinking is if you wanted maybe a couple more points where you have follow-up. And maybe if you wanted to make sure that, you know, HR and board of supervisors was talked to in addition to 75% of 120 employees. 75% might be a lot. You could lower that to 50. 75% might be a lot. You could lower that to 50. Now you can do a negotiation in there, I think with Conry. And get some of the things that you liked in the logic proposal. Without even going up to what, what logic is.
And, and logic is always, so when we did this the first time, it was Fox Lawson. Same consultant. It was, it was more. And then they went with Gallagher and a pricey, because Gallagher is a little more expensive or more, larger company. And their costs have come down a little bit since they transitioned. They opened this logic compensation group. But they are still a little more expensive than the rest of them, which I think some of them, you know, you, you have to look at cost. So.
So they've done, Conry's done Dallas County twice. They have them back, which kind of says a nice recommendation. How many times has Lynn County used logic?
Quite a few. They did, they've done an initial in 2010. I think she's in a lot of discuss, and that is in a lot of discussions with their, or like different moving compensation. They, they use, they use this consultant on a regular basis for different things. They've done a management survey a few years ago, I think 2018. That was a big undertaking for Lynn County. I remember their director commenting on that and then taking it to the board of supervisors for approval for that. Then I think they did some other benchmarking for, they consulted with them for different things just recently. She's presented at our I-Cover group. She's, she's probably one of the well-known people in Iowa. Like I said, if you want local, she's the one that knows. She's been in Iowa for years and years. Again, it, it comes with a cost, which I don't, I mean, trying to justify that additional cost, I don't know if there's that much difference between the two. You know, unless you worked with both of them, I don't know how you would determine that. Dallas County has had two different HR directors that have worked with Conry and Associates and both have had good things to say. So, because their first, their first survey was done when the former, and now Beth is their director and she was happy with them, so.
I have another question.
Sure.
The question they asked. Is Stroud County more like Dallas County or Lynn County in terms of our services, our, our number and?
In terms of size, it's much closer to Dallas.
And size is not necessarily what I'm asking. I mean, it's, it's more in terms of.
Valuation and size, population.
We are somewhat competing for the same group of people too, for, we're close enough to Dallas County. I mean, we could pull people from Dallas County. But I mean, geographically, we are probably, we're like Dallas County, we are. Lynn County, Lynn County does have their, their differences, their different struggles as far as recruiting and different things like that. I would say we're probably somewhat the same from Dallas. Dallas, you know, Polk County, city of Des Moines, both from their same applicant pool. We're close enough to the metro that we're trying to compete with that too.
I was thinking more in terms of the type of services.
Oh, services.
Description system we have. I don't know.
You know, looking at different, different classifications and stuff, Dallas County probably has, Lynn County has more, more levels of positions, they're larger. They've got, you know, if I look at their, like when I do comps for bargaining, Dallas County has a lot of the same structure. Lynn, they might not fit in one position. It might be two positions, but they kind of split those. Yeah. We're kind of unique because we have positions that, you know, we might look at another county and they have three different positions, but we have it within one classification and it works for us, but they've got it far split out. Yeah. Lynn is larger. They just came into, I mean, they're, we kind of moved up in, in on the census as far as data, so we kind of moved up and we include Lynn in a lot of our stuff. Now Dallas has always been included in our studies. They're somewhat, like Lucy said, somewhat similar in size, so. So a lot of the jobs that they looked at there are probably similar. It, it seems like a lot of the things that we are, are touching on are all covered under Conry and anything extra, we would probably be able to say this is something else. We want, will you include it or will you charge us? And that's something that I could touch up, touch base with Conry and Associates to just make sure. Like you said, if they know that a lot of the job description work is, that the prep work is done, maybe they'd be willing to. Well, and one thing is just, can you give us more structure on the follow-up? Yeah. Which.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to totally ignore the job descriptions.
Nope. They're gonna update and that gives them a good indication of what they do. They, they do that research, which all of them do. They look at all the data. They research the job descriptions so that, because when they get that survey data in, there's a certain level of job match in order for it to really be a similar position to compare it to. You know, we want to make sure we're not comparing apples to oranges. We want, you know, good, good comps and make sure they're the right position. So they need to understand and know, know each job that they're working with.
I, I, I'm glad to hear you say, you know, you can't go long.
No, that's, that's, that's a good thing, but you know.
Are you comfortable, Conry?
I am. I, I mean, and I'm trusting my colleagues and their experience with them. I mean, like I said, no, no negatives, really no negatives on any, any of these. I did have to reach back out to Carlson to get the quote. I didn't quite have it in the timeline that I wanted. He got busy, but.
I think I think you're comfortable with Conry and, like I said, it gives you, if others are in agreement, that it gives you a little room to negotiate if there's something they really don't have in there that you think is important. You know, because of their.
Sure. And I'll touch back and see if, you know, maybe we can get a little bit more detailed so that it's not just, hey, while last, let's go ahead and get some follow-ups included. That way it's not, you know, I'm not trying to get things with, you know, it's clear cut and, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't think, and I don't think asking to make sure that they talk to department heads and elected officials. I, I, I think that that's probably part of their plan. It's included. Just not clear. Yeah, the department heads are included in the 120 because their jobs are being evaluated.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, the only ones that wouldn't be, I mean, we're not, we're not evaluating the eight elected positions, but everything else is is being looked at. They're, the department heads' job descriptions and everything, so. I do like, they all have training on their system. Carlson Detman likes to do more the consulting when they're staff. But the other two, Conry had a section where they really come in and train, you know, how do I, I mean, I maintain it all. Springstead did that too, so. That's important for HR to understand.
Right.
The methodology behind everything, so. Yeah, it's hard when, you know, like I said, all of them would be just fine. There are just bits or pieces from each of them that I like more than the others, so. But I'm happy to reach out to Conry and Associates and see if I can get more details added into there. Hopefully with no cost, if there's a cost adjustment, I will bring it back. And then typically there'll be an agreement that needs to be approved by the board to finalize everything prior to the work beginning, so.
I think this is a scheduling consideration.
Yep.
So that makes a motion to move forward. Can we move to the director, our director of internal operations and HR to pursue finalizing classification compensation study with Conry and Associates?
Yep, that's enough. Basil, I.
Thank you.
Yep. So hopefully I'll have an agreement with them next week or so, so we can get moving forward with this.
That'll be great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work. On to departmental reports. Environmental Health reportedly report. Morning, really, still morning.
So I have provided the written report to you guys and instead of going through that line by line, I did a PowerPoint. Hopefully I think she scanned it as PDF, so hopefully some of the links work. But on that, I just kind of wanted to highlight a few of the things from the report and then we can, if you have any questions on the report afterwards, we can go through that. As you guys know, the aquatic ordinance, we did pass that. It goes into effect on February 11th. Everybody has been notified and we've been getting some of the forms and everything back in. I kind of wanted to bring this up about, about a week ago. It was January 30th. There was a hospitalization of a hotel, Ohio hotel swimming pool due to some carbon monoxide levels. And the reason that I bring that up is it had 13 people that were hospitalized, no deaths, but it was basically due to a carbon monoxide issue. And our new ordinance actually does require carbon monoxide detectors to be put in, but not only in the rooms with the field learning appliances, but also adjacent rooms and rooms connected by ventilation. So the hotel actually did have carbon monoxide detectors, but they weren't in the adjacent rooms. So that is, we just kind of wanted to point that out because that was very forward thinking from our staff. When they started that a couple of years ago, very adamant about keeping it. And something again that just, our legislation at the state level does not require that. And so this is the importance of, you know, local ordinances able to, to do those things, so. The next thing I kind of wanted to highlight was our indoor air quality activities. As you guys know, you did the proclamation for radon awareness in January. Bryce and Stephanie, they actually helped out quite a bit with our social media and our newsletters. We did, we gave away 50 free test kits. And it was the first, from what I understand, it's the first time in a long time that we've had 50 of them that were completely given away and the majority of them all went to the, to the public and not just our staff and people in the building. So that was nice that we did those promotions and they seemed to work. We did some social media things and we did radio promotions. I know Leanne did a radio promotion. Molly on our Board of Health did one as well. People would come in and, and, you know, we did some facts and stuff on social media, so we had a pretty good turnout and a good response from that, so. Some, one of the other things too is there's a new water infrastructure grant for unsuhrer communities. We, basically we sent out postcards. We identified about 128 properties and that were eligible based on their geographic location, construction and dates that they haven't sold. We sent out 128 postcards and we've had a pretty good response so far from people getting those postcards, wanting to know if they're eligible. We kind of talked to them and see what's going on with their current septic system and try to help them through that application process. We just sent out a bunch of information last week to probably about six or seven places that appear to be eligible. And then they're getting their bids and we'll help them with that application process. So those were the postcards that we actually sent out. And then I think the next slide first. I don't know if the links are going to work on here for, there was, do they show up to open the website page?
You see, you sent out this postcard. Are there people who might be eligible who didn't get a postcard?
Possibly. It would be if, I had one today that he is in one of the geographic areas, but he didn't make our list because it appeared that his house had transferred since 2009. And so it was cut off of our mailing list. And, but he ended up being exempt from time of transfer. And so then that makes him eligible. So they have to, the houses have to be constructed pre-1983. July 1st of 1983. They can't have sold since July 1st of 2009. They have to be in an approved and identified unsuhrer community, which we went through and kind of determined some areas.
So is it farms incorporated or?
Farms wouldn't, so a single homestead would not count. No. So it would be like basically a group of 10 or more homes with, with one or more homes per acre is kind of how they've defined that. So we created a website and, or a webpage that kind of goes through and helps people. There's a, if you want to click on that map of identified, yeah, right there. That one, people can kind of go, these are all the ones that received the postcards. And you can kind of like zoom into some of the properties and they can see that their property is one that should be potentially eligible. Now, again, you might be in that area if your house sold, like the one guy I talked to this morning. He actually, it was, it looked like it transferred, so it was knocked off our list, but it was actually put into a trust. So it was exempt from time of transfer. So in talking to him, he is going to be potentially eligible and we're working with him on getting an application submitted.
And why is it that they can't have sold?
So the reasoning, so they're on the construction, it's the first septic code in Iowa was started July 1st of 1983, so they assume that any system put in after that should have been permitted and done right. And 2009 is when trans, time of transfer program started in Iowa. So they assumed that if it transferred after that, that it should be good, which we all know is not always the case, but those were their initial parameters. We're hoping it loosens up. But there was $10 million set aside and I know as of last week, they've already, in the first few weeks of the grant, they've given out about a million dollars.
That's great. I'm glad that they're using it.
Yes. So, and we're promoting it and I mean, I would say that a lot of, we did ours, I think the 21st is when we sent it out. We had calls the next day. And I know a lot of other counties are just kind of starting to get their stuff put together too. So the money will probably go pretty quick and that's why we're hoping they do open it up and get more money. So, but we don't know for sure.
Do you think they would extend it outside of these areas?
Well, I hope so. I mean, I know it's really, it's really like they're looking at these older communities that are small lots and hard to do anything with and they felt that was a bigger focus. They've known it's been a problem for these unsuhrer communities for a long time. Originally they had a particular list. Now they have allowed us to open that up at the county level so that we could expand. We only had three areas initially that were eligible. But then they allowed us to look at what we know is happening in our county.
The three that are probably in our incorporated.
Yes, Fernald, Shively in Iowa Center. Yeah, those were the three originally. And then we were allowed to take their parameters and find some additional subdivisions and things like on the outskirts of it.
I know a lot of older farms folks who.
Don't have anything.
Money, have lived in the same place before, ever. They could really use help from something like this. And I know that their septic systems are continually improving, the water quality. But it's just having the money to get something done.
Yes, we have brought that up in our meetings with them, so they understand that that is a concern. Yeah, and I actually am looking at another grant applying for, and then it would be potentially, that one is income-based, but we would be able to do single-family homesteads in that one. So I am kind of looking into that and trying to, to apply for that as well.
Let me know. I know somebody who needs that.
Okay. And if you, we also created the frequently asked questions. And what we did is we broke them down by general questions, eligibility, application, just a lot of general things. It's just helping our staffs with consistent answers. We give that to those, the different things. So definitely, if you haven't checked out that part of our website, go to it. I put the, you have to use the, the link that I told you on the report. So make sure you use that to get there. Other than that, is there any questions based on anything I've said or any of the report that you guys got?
No, I like the way you broke down the questions. It makes it easier for people to really understand how to find what they're looking for or more that they didn't know they were looking for.
I agree. It's a little easier versus looking at, you know, 40 different questions. You're looking at, oh, 10 for here.
Right. We have like one PDF at first and we're like, how can we make this better? And we've actually shared that with the IFA, the Iowa Finance Authority has basically sent that off to other counties too. So I mean, hopefully it'll help some other people too.
I do not have any other questions.
Yes. All right. Well, if you guys think of any, any, just let me know.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have animal control quarterly report. Hello, Anna.
Hello. Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Thanks for hanging in with us.
I don't know. Just go over some highlights of my, um, report here. Last quarter kept us pretty busy up until the new year. Uh, generally, the last three months of the year are not as busy. Um, as the warmer months, however, due to the unseasonably warm, um, slow season was shortened for us. We ended up with a higher than normal intake of animals and animal control calls with November ended up being our busiest month of the year as far as animal control was concerned. Our average daily number of cats stayed right around ninety. This month, however, we are averaging around sixty-five. We have five dogs currently in foster care and are getting ready to send another dog into foster care this week. Some numbers to highlight for the last quarter are total of seventy-eight intakes of cats, twenty-one intakes of dogs. We had seventy-five cats adopted and twelve dogs adopted, and we were also able to return nineteen animals to their owners. We had sixty-five animal control calls last quarter with thirty-one of them being during the month of November. These consisted mostly of stray animal pickups and complaints. And we had a final fundraiser during the middle of December. This was put on for us by a group known as Chasing Tales who, to a larger fundraiser during the summer. In collaboration with the Tattered Toad in Cambridge, Iowa, and we were able to raise, um, one thousand four hundred and eight dollars and six cents that afternoon. Um, for what they like to call a meat and cheese Palooza fundraiser, which is just really fun, if you've ever been to one. Uh, and in this report today, I've included, um, our two thousand twenty-one yearly statistics for the animal shelter. In two thousand twenty-one, and just to highlight some of that attachment. In two thousand twenty-one, we took in a total of four hundred and fifty-five animals. This was about a forty-five point five percent increase from two thousand twenty. We had three hundred and ninety-three adoptions and transfers to another agency and sixty-nine animals returned to owner, and this was a twenty-eight point three percent increase from two thousand twenty. Even though we took in more animals, we were able to decrease the average length of stay of our adoptable animals by thirty-seven point one percent. We are still inputting past data into Shelter Pro, so we can continue to look at past statistics and trends. I believe that transparency in our numbers supports our mission and running a no-kill and responsible animal shelter. Any questions? Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other reports, we have nothing for other reports. Any upcoming agenda items? That's the type of public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone who would like to step forward to the microphone or if you're on Zoom, Jovi, you can raise your hand. Or anyone else who might like to make comments. Being known will close public comment number two, Liaison Assignments Committee meeting updates and announcement to the supervisors. Sure.
Yes, thank you. We have our Years of Service Awards recognition tomorrow, of course. That's always a great thing. I have a quarterly nine-one-one service board meeting tomorrow evening. Um, statewide supervisors meeting in the morning on Thursday, Farm Bureau Board meeting Thursday evening. Corrections Board Friday morning, if you can register sitting. What's going on next week? Monday Conservation Board meeting, so, that meeting's busy.
Yeah, so tonight I have a workforce council call. I have the Years of Service as well tomorrow, and then also the ICPAC Supervisors meeting. I also have a Central Iowa Workforce Development meeting on. Thursday, Friday, I will be in the morning at the Economic Development meeting with each chamber all morning, and then, um. We have a quick lunch, and then I have the initial, um, names of the. Out of the office all day Friday. And I also have the Farm Bureau on my calendar as well for Thursday night.
Yes, I've got, um. Oh, oh, the above, and then, um, I've got a Story County College Access Network meeting tomorrow. After our Years of Service Awards, and then also Farm Bureau meeting Thursday night after the statewide supervisor meeting, and then. I am headed to the NICO Conference Friday, so I will be. Out at the conference from Friday through Wednesday of next week. So I'll be back in October on Thursday.
Okay. With acting the motion to adjourn. Motion seconded, market.
Helen.
Hi.
Basil.
Hi.
Thank you.